This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's three o'clock and we're gonna call this meeting to order. First item, Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so roll call, we have Bob, Ed, Carol, and Doug.
And yourself.
Myself, yeah, so we have the five of us. So approval of the final agenda. And I would need, do I need a motion from another board member? Is that how you want it?
No, ma'am chair, the chair, what we're requesting is that we add an item, amend the agenda, add an item under District Council with regards to authorization to make a demand and offer for judgment to or line independent litigation.
I move to approve the agenda as revised.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so public comment, do we have anybody?
Don't believe so. I don't have anything, no.
Nothing online?
Is there a way to start the game?
I know. 302, right?
You want to reiterate them yourselves.
Alright, so for everybody that's online, if you can, guys can mute yourselves. Alright, thank you. Number six, local achievements and recognitions, do we have anybody that the board or the staff like to recognize?
So I sent out an email Tuesday and I just wanted to put it on record, we did receive, Kenny Hall, our utilities director, has tendered his resignation. He will be leaving us at the end of this month, so we are actively looking for his replacement. He's got some big shoes to fill, but I just wanted to reiterate, we really appreciate his time and commitment to the district and all of the improvements that he's done during his tenure here, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors.
Alright, thank you.
I think, did we receive a resident?
We did, do you have access to customer care? We did receive a compliment to staff, specifically Georgia Johnson, for her assistance with this resident, and I believe it was about sharing some information to their HOA and being very responsive and, do you have it?
Did you say stars event?
No, responsive.
To what event?
To what event?
Sharing information, I think.
Just in general.
It was just a response to an email and.
I thought it was a specific.
We will have it.
I believe it was from the Hampton Park HOA, Doug, were you, I think you were CC'd on that.
Yeah, I was CC'd on, I don't remember the specifics, but I think just recognizing staff and Georgia for their responsiveness to your resident acknowledgement is fine.
Alright, nothing else? Okay, so item seven, advisory committees and items to report, do we have anything?
We just have the two items. The first one is the appointment of board liaisons for advisory committees. If you wish to take this up now or maybe at the end, depending on the board's action further on in the agenda for a specific item about the dissolution of the SBAC, or you can just not choose to assign a liaison to the SBAC.
I think we can just exclude that.
What were we talking, I thought we were talking about the committees.
One above, one before that, appointing the board liaison for the advisory committee.
So similar to like staff, we have staff liaisons assigned to each advisory committee and subcommittee, this would be a board liaison to your three, potentially three advisory committees or two.
Which would be Stony Brook, Parks and Rec, and Pelican?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we had already approved that.
We just have to pick who is gonna be the liaison.
I think I mentioned it in the last board meeting that we need to, we need to do that.
Name someone?
Yeah, so I think it probably makes sense for Bob to take Pelican.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Or Carol, yeah. Trying to get adjusted to.
It's okay.
So I don't know if someone wants to, I don't know if one of you two has a preference or you wanna nominate.
Rock, paper, scissors, or.
But I think it'll be a benefit for somebody actually from Pelican to be the person to do Parks and Recs, just because they do have a lot of stuff there, they could be a good partner for that committee too, so keep that in mind.
Say that again.
Parks and Recs, if you wanna take it.
So I guess.
I better go look in a mirror, because I just think I look that stupid.
Bob, if you wanna take Pelican, I'll take Parks and Recs.
It sounds good, and I have no problem with that, only question is, why is it more appropriate for a Pelican resident?
Because you have some Parks and Recs amenities and you have items there that you can give feedback to.
I'm okay with that.
And you're gonna be just a liaison anyways, I mean, to me, I'm.
Again, I'm okay with it, but the impact is, and the financial impact is more of a gateway.
Yeah, the issues they don't pay for. Yeah. I agree with that.
That goes both ways, because then it'll be, I mean, I'm open to it.
I'm open to both ways.
The fact is, that's not the decision at this point, it's more a advisory deal as opposed to.
The intent of this position would be to simply relay back from those committees back to the board on any actions or any information, or just to kind of keep a pulse on what those committees are doing and reviewing and discussing. It's not to direct the committees, it's not to.
Not to have an agenda.
Not to have, or give input, it's simply to report back to the board.
I like the idea of Carol being the liaison for a couple reasons, one, new set of eyes coming in, two, the fact that she comes from Pelican is a little bit of unbiased there, because I think you're gonna get primarily gateway residents on the.
Only gateway residents are allowed to be on.
Yeah, yeah, so you're gonna get representation there. And three, I mean, again, I just, there's, everything we've talked about, there'll be no bias there, someone with a fresh set of eyes, and I think it'd be good for you coming in to get your hands, you know, to jump in on a, you know, be on the liaison committee side, I have no problem with that.
Now, are the applications closed now? Is this for all we're gonna get?
No, that's a different item. And to answer your question, it's open until all of the vacancies are filled.
Up to, okay.
We have five now, actually, we had another one that just pulled.
Optimally, it'll be seven, is that correct?
It's up to seven, so ultimately.
So if you get five, you're.
Yeah. So was there.
I'll make the motion then, for Bob is Pelican and Carol is Parks and Rec liaison.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. And then we need somebody for Stony Brook.
Well, Stony Brook's gonna be dissolved, so I don't.
That's up to a future decision.
Based on what we see.
Okay, well, I'll take Stony Brook until the decision's been made.
And then that's 20 minutes.
Could be the shortest liaison.
Sounds like he's on a safe limb here.
Or I'll be preparing my letter of withdrawal.
What's your name, McCarthy?
Alright, so item B, appointment of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for our Resolution 2023-11.
So we had some applications come in, and we did have one late one come in yesterday after the agenda was posted. We do have it available here for your viewing, if you'd like to include them, or if you'd like to wait for them, to add them to the next meeting, but these are, again, it's up to seven committee members, the board can choose to opt for five or for seven, it is your advisory committee.
You mentioned that you had a fifth one, are you gonna try to present it?
It's on the screen.
Yep, it's.
I don't think there's any issue with, if we accept what we have, and then if there's a need to go to seven, I don't think we need to put a cap on it, we have that already within the framework.
I agree.
We can start with five, and if they, we get interest, then great.
Okay.
I move that we accept all five of the current applicants in front of us for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
I'll second that for discussion, I just wanna see you scroll this last one up, I wanna verify that they are, and.
Here's their address, little jumps for call.
I wanna know if they're an owner.
They're.
Keep going up, there we go, keep going.
Owner.
Yes, they're an owner, okay. They're good. Do what?
I got the word.
I just wanna make sure that went from Lehigh, and they're trying to get a seat on the board.
Well, but that was my conversation, even if they were not an owner, they could be on the board if they were appointed by a resident member. So, okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so item A, A and B, you guys, anything to pull there on the agendas, on those minutes?
Both the President's Council and the Board meeting, I had nothing, nope.
I need a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda items, so District Manager?
There are none.
Okay, and then admin agenda items?
So this. That's okay.
He's here.
Oh, he's here, yeah, I didn't see him.
I think he's here for the draft facilities plan. Steven, is there anything you'd like to bring up under your item, or under the District Engineer section, or would you like to wait till the facilities plan?
I'll just wait till the facilities plan.
Okay, the first item for the administrative agenda, so the county chose to rebid the roundabout at Griffin and Gateway, and so this is the result of their, for the district's portion, which is the utility portion only, does not include the fountain, this would be our share of the cost. We did have a conversation with Steven Bloom yesterday, instead of pulling, the staff recommendation was to pull from reserves because the entire amount was not budgeted in our capital, in our enterprise fund. We did talk to Steven Bloom, and he's going to look at alternatives to fund this million dollars, we have the money in reserves, it's up to the board if you wish to pull it from reserves, or if you'd like to have staff work with Steven Bloom at looking alternatives for funding sources, if it's bond, if it's a short-term loan, whatever that may be, and we could bring that back to the board for your final decision, or you can make a decision today to pull it directly from reserves and fund this project. But the county will be taking this in front of their Board of County Commission, so we need your, hopefully your approval today on going with the engineer's letter of recommendation to award it to, I think it was Wright Construction. Denko, who did the utility work on the first roundabout, is their sub, and will be doing the majority, if not all, of the utility work on this roundabout, so staff is familiar, has worked with them in the past, the county has worked with Denko in the past, so we are, we support the engineer's letter of recommendation.
So the county rebid this, they saved themselves 70, 75,000 bucks, we saved ourselves $1.40298.
Well, I believe we did save somebody.
But the one advantage is now we have a commonality with the two contractors, the one that's working for us on the utilities is the same as the one doing the project.
Wright would be.
At least that's advantageous.
Wright is the prime, Denko was the sub on both, on both.
But on the original project, EH, the original bid, EHC was the low bidder.
And they were the prime, Denko was also doing the utility stuff.
Either way.
So the prime went from EHC, and then that was the original one, and then the rebid put it to Wright.
And Wright was the primary on the other roundabout on Commerce and Gateway.
And our cost estimate that we had originally set aside for this work was what?
I believe it was 1.2. That was for the first roundabout.
That was for everything.
We had 1.2 for the first roundabout and 800 for the second, and we already spent the 800 for the second one on the utility relocation project that we finished up a year ago in November.
Correct.
So we didn't have anything set aside for this.
There is a little bit.
A little, yeah.
But again, we have to.
We had expected that the total cost for both roundabouts would be a little over 2 million, and it came in closer to, well, it was a little over 3, so.
Okay.
So then the decision, yes.
If we were to take this from reserves, what kind of reserves would we have left?
There is, Stephen questions, ask us to write that.
We'd have to, we'd have to look into that with our.
I'll be able to tell you after March.
Is Steven on the call, Steven Bloom? Steven Bloom, can you answer that question for Carol, please?
If we, good afternoon and Happy New Year. If we were to use it, it would be, just round numbers, about $3 million would be left over in the unreserved portion, there's other reserved portions related to connection fees and maintenance, but just unreserve, it would go down to 3 million.
And that's deducting what, Steve, the 1.1 million?
That's deducting the 1.1 million, yeah. Right now, it's almost, right now, it's almost 4.3 as of the end of last year, we've obviously gonna, the hope is to improve on that this year, but we can't count on it, so for now, kind of rounding the numbers, about 3 million.
Is that money dedicated to water sewer and/or irrigation, or is that money undedicated, and let's say, I don't know what, I didn't add the numbers up, but I'm going to guess this 1.034663, I'm sorry, 66160, don't forget that $1.40, is divided up, not into equal components of actual cost, is the reserve dedicated by utility?
It's just by, it's by fund.
So this would come out of the 400, the utility, the enterprise fund, so the unrestricted reserves is for the enterprise fund.
It's not dedicated to water sewer?
No, no, it's just the enterprise fund in general, the 400.
Alright, Carol, you had a question?
And would there be any difficulty with completing the project in a timely manner if we did not take it from reserves and were looking for other methods?
I don't foresee, the county would be approving the contract, hopefully in a couple weeks, and then they would typically issue a notice to proceed for procurement of materials, which will take time, so I don't foresee them going under construction for a couple months, so we have some time to look for alternative funding sources.
And I expect there'll be a month or two after that before we would even see any requests for payment, so we have probably at least three or four months before they're gonna look for any kind of money, and it will not be this, they do progress billing, so until the roundabout is complete, we won't need the full million dollars.
But your trouble is the interest rates right now are the time to be going out.
Doug has a question.
Yeah, so I know typically on average, you try to hold three to six months of, or to cover three to six months of operating expense. From a government entity, remind me again, what is recommended for an organization like ours to have on hand from a reserve perspective?
Well, you're right, though, it's three months is kind of the standard practice, but, you know, again, when you're doing quite a bit of project work, that number is just not gonna be enough.
Right, yeah. We talked about that, I couldn't remember if government entities have a different threshold.
Yeah, in terms of, you know, it certainly doesn't hurt to ask the bank.
Yeah.
Anytime we do these loans, we always make sure that there is a, no penalty for prepayment, you know, so even if we start a loan and go down that path and decide, well, this is just not what we want, even then, we could always prepay with no penalty, so.
I don't have any problem pulling this from reserves, just considering the current market conditions and the interest rates, I don't think it's advantageous for us to borrow against it, to leave that in its place, so my recommendation would be to pull it from reserves.
Time here.
Okay, so wanna make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allocate, that we leverage reserves to fund the.
Griffin Roundabout.
Roundabout utility.
Sorry, I'm gonna get off, wasn't prepared. For the, for B230044JJB, Gateway Griffin, or Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Roundabout construction.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Is the board of the recommendation?
I think what we should do is probably have a separate, I'll make a separate motion to award.
Initial, initial.
I thought I would do it in two parts, one to secure the funding source and then to approve, so I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation regarding the.
Board of contract?
Award of contract. To what's the.
Wright Construction.
Yeah, to Wright Construction.
That's being the, Tony, jump in.
Recommended based upon being multi-advantageous, competent, qualified bidder.
That was the shortest one you've ever given us.
I think you left something out, but.
Part of the part is the county's already made the recommendation, they've already got the information.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Alright, the second item for the administrative is, the board has discussed in the past about the potential, taking over the potential maintenance of the roundabout up by Gateway High School, so we did reach out to Mainscape and ask for a proposal, and you see it here.
$500 per month?
Per month.
Six grand a year.
Well, it's for both, both roundabouts, it would be for Commerce Lakes Drive and Gateway High School.
500 each?
So I have a question.
500 total for both of them?
Yes.
Which one was in addition to the school? If we weren't doing the school, what would the price be?
Did not ask, I would assume 250 split, 50/50, but it's come to our attention that we had been maintaining the Commerce Lakes Drive one, and they weren't being compensated for it, so we figured let's.
Did you thank them?
We did, very much. So this will be for 500 bucks for both.
And the school is offering what toward this proposal?
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
They're undying thanks.
Thank yous.
I'll say and say.
And we can expect, I would say, when Griffin comes on, it'll go to 750.
I would, that's good math, in my book.
Well, it'll be a little different, because it's got the fountain instead of the deal.
It depends on the landscaping, that'll be in the roundabout.
Yeah, you got that fountain in there, so.
There may not be as much.
It may not be, I think it'll be more annually, but I don't think it'll be consistent month, because I think you're gonna have probably every quarter you'll need to service, you know, probably the pumps or something else, or.
It's a difference.
Yeah, it's not a plan or some other old stuff.
So this, this kind of made us staff go down a rabbit hole, the Mainscape's con, just as a little bit of history, just as a point of reference, Mainscape's contract is up for renewal in March, and so we started looking at the nuts and bolts of the contract and making sure what they're doing is what's being paid for, and what they should be doing, that they're doing it, and what they shouldn't be doing, that they shouldn't be mowing, that's not district assets, so when it is time for renewal, I mean, if the board so chooses to make board with this right away, we'll go ahead and get that amended and get this added to their contract, but as a review of their entire scope for March, we're gonna be looking at everything that's in that contract and making sure they're being held accountable, and us as well, that we're following true to the contract.
Is that comparable to the look we're currently undertaking in Pelican?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one for, question for Tony, what, you're talking about rabbit hole, I think this one's a snake hole, what hole, what hole are we going down by simply accepting and knowingly accepting the duties and responsibilities of somebody else, and we're doing it simply because they won't do it, and we're not, let's say, strong enough?
And I'll add all of that.
Literally wise enough to stand up and tell them, no, we're not gonna do this, we're gonna bill you for it.
If we don't have a duty, we don't have liability, if we agree to take and perform a function, we then have a duty, we do have liability if we do it wrong. So part of what I would suggest is interlocal agreement and memorandum of understanding would be that they, the school district, would hold us harmless, indemnify us, many and all claims that may arise from us taking this, and the other question is whether or not we need Lee County approval, it's in there right of way, correct, or just a right-of-way permit from Lee County.
Yeah, it's in the county, so.
But we don't have any leverage to make them do their job and maintain it? Well, that's up to, we could ask Lee County DOT to make sure they do their job, that's really the only leverage we have. And if they say no? That's the county's.
And that's the relative, I know Laura has more, we've been dealing with this and asking for that, two years, for two years, and.
They're ignoring us, yeah.
I mean, the issue that we have is, I mean, the county just does not have the maintenance support to maintain their own grounds and the roundabout at a standard that we have. Do you just go to any school? Very rarely is the grass mowed properly and the side, the sidewalks edged and all that kind of good stuff. My issue, there's an aesthetic component to this, which we just want it to look better, but two, what I'm curious is, how much additional risk and liability are we assuming if we're just looking at the maintenance, but is there anything else tied to that from a liability or risk perspective that we're not thinking about that we could be pulled into?
Well, I guess the question is, the full extent of the landscaping consists of, is it grass, bushes, trees?
All the above.
It's weed control from bushes, so.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned about the grass, it's the lower level stuff, bushes, to the extent they stay under the, what, 36 inches, whatever it's necessary for line of sight and it doesn't obstruct it, but that's where you can get into liability, but trees, somebody runs off the road, gets into a tree, even though it might meet MUTCD standards, enough that standards, you can bet somebody be knocking on the door saying we somehow didn't maintain some aspect of that, I mean, it's, I think it's a stretch, I think the exposure is probably minimal, I mean, have there been any action, I know people run over portions of it, right?
Jump the curb.
Yeah, jumped the curb, and just, it's been sign damage, to the best of my knowledge, there was one of the trees getting knocked over, I think on the Commerce Lakes one, or bumped into, but there's been no landscaping damage, suffer being like run over, just mostly signs.
And I'll just also add, I think we would all agree that that crushed shell is not ideal, and so I think part of what we had talked about is building a standard for, one for the community, and two, the roundabouts would be included in that, you know, we talked about turf or just grass versus the shell or mulch.
Back from some other artificial.
So, one of the things that I think we should probably discuss is if we do agree to take over the maintenance, we may ask either the county to make some changes or contribute to us making those changes, I don't know if, I'd probably say they're not gonna bite on it, but I'd at least ask for something, you know?
Well, I'm just concerned about somebody else coming down the road, you did it for them, do it for me, that's the problem.
So, Tony, are you suggesting that there be some sort of letter of understanding between us and the school district?
Yep.
That we are going to be doing maintenance on their property?
Well, it's on the county's property and the school, I'm not even sure how the school has the obligation with.
I think it was just through the LDO.
Was it through the DO?
Or the DO.
So in essence, we'd be taking over the school's obligation that they have under their development order from Lee County, and as Chelsea and Laura have put in the staff recommendations, enter into an interlocal agreement, I prefer that than a memorandum of understanding, that would outline the duties obligations, and also, to the extent that the school district can hold the district harmless, and also get extra insurance and name the district as, you know, additional insurer, any policies that the school board has.
So this would be.
Can they grant an easement to maintain the landscaping? Yes, yeah, well, again, they can't, the school board cannot grant the easement, because the county owns that road right in play, and the development obligation is on the school board, we'd be assuming that obligation that the school district has.
So this would be a condition of accepting to doing this?
If they don't agree to. Interlocal agreement would have those terms in there, they have to come back to the board.
Okay.
Yes, and so just refresher, point of this being discussed in length in the past was, this is a welcome entrance to Gateway, and the board has made it clear that it's not to our standards, our Gateway standards, and that's why this has come in front of you, and if you do wish to us to make the ask, we can make the ask, but I don't know that we have any teeth with that.
That's what I was gonna say, do we have any authority whatsoever inside that county right of way to do anything to, I don't see that we got anything.
No.
Yes, sir.
But someday, sometime, they'll have to come back before us.
It's a very synergistic relationship with all the governmental body.
Yes. So, Tony, are you comfortable with us approving the money today, and then you'll bring the agreement or whatever it is back at some future time?
I think what would be appropriate is approve the amendment to the Mainscape contract subject to coming back and with an interlocal agreement and actually entering to interlocal agreement with the school district.
Which I think we could push that out pretty quick, standard in our local agreement, and get the approval of the Lee County School District.
So I, sorry, so this will go all the way prior to the sidewalk, I just don't want Mainscape doing anything past that sidewalk, because that's.
You're talking about backup walk? You're talking about backup walk?
Because when you see, when you have here, that's the bahia, it's only between the road and the sidewalk, and then sidewalk and fence, so I wanna make sure that they, that we're not gonna be going in, because we're not gonna go into the areas that the Gateway High School has to mow.
Just limit it to our county right of way.
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess as part of this would be a graphic depicting the exact areas, so there's no confusion.
Probably a good idea.
As opposed to a narrative, I'm always better with images anyways.
Because I was gonna say the same thing, I don't think we have any bushes on Commerce Lakes. Because I was gonna say same thing. I don't, I don't think we have any bushes on Commerce Lakes and Gateway Boulevard, and that's what is listed over here. We just have the stable ponds.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
Yeah.
And what we hope for is that Lee County doesn't come after us.
No, that, that one has palmetto shrubs, and then it has that, and then the list station, that's being taken care of it already, like we. Yes, we separate. We pay for it. IHOA is actually doing that area.
Okay.
So we all in same, same page?
Yeah.
Someone just needs to make motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
You have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Catch all those conditions?
Tony, you catch all those conditions?
Absolutely. Good graphics, whole harmless indemnification, and assignment of any, the DO. And we need a copy of the DO, if you could, Chelsea, asking for that.
If we could take, just like a, just take a good little hour and.
All right, are you ready for item C? It's pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, so consideration of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee dissolution.
This came at the recommendation of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Where you lays?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion.
Okay, what, right now, we deal with and respond back and forth with the advisory committee, correct?
Yes.
And now that's gonna be dissolved, and I'm assuming it's gonna fall on the HOA?
Well, at effective January first, we staff.
This past year?
Nope, like four, four days ago. We've, we've been working with the HOA and, and a, and a representative of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee to actually implement the O and M agreement with Stony Brook HOA that has been on the books since two thousand twelve. And so we've come together collectively, and effective January first, they're gonna operate per the O and M as they should have been since two thousand twelve. And it's my understanding that it's the desire of, of the HOA and, and the SBAC to dissolve the Stony Brook Advisory Committee. And by putting and implementing the O and M as it should have been since two thousand twelve, the HOA will be responsible, like Pelican does, for the day-to-day operations, the landscaping, everything laid out in the O and M. I think it's the desire of, of that group to dissolve here and basically form over there, under the HOA, under their directive.
Well, they, they, I'm assuming they've got an HOA that was previously elected, and they may be in the adding or subtracting members. Are you in a voting deal where you're getting new members right now? You got a five-member board?
Here. Come, come to the mic, Warren, if you would.
And it would be, it's probably important, Warren, to, to kind of, to outline that.
At the last meeting of the HOA, it was decided that the, they're gonna move the people that are on the advisory committee now over to be a committee with the HOA.
A committee, but not, not the HOA?
No, not the HOA. Yeah, no, it'll be, it'll be a committee responsible to the HOA. We'll be doing the stuff, they'll be doing just the stuff that's in the O four fund. Won't be doing anything outside.
But this board will be dealing with the HOA, not that committee?
Right.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Per the O and M agreement, yes.
Yes.
And the district, it's laid out in the O and M agreement what the HOA is responsible for, like landscaping, small minor repairs, up to five thousand dollars. The district's responsible for basically all public works-related items, roads, ponds.
But this is all associated with the, the right of way of the road?
Yes.
That's essentially it.
Yeah, district assets.
District assets, yeah.
On our side, yeah.
And there's five members of the HOA? Five, seven, seven on your HOA? Okay. Okay. And everybody up there's happy?
From, from the district standpoint.
That's a subjective statement.
I don't, yeah, that one really worded very good.
So from the district's, the district's standpoint with regards to the O and M, our concern stops at the HOA. How they handle and means and methods of maintaining the items laid out in the O and M, that's the HOA's responsibility.
So we are dealing truly with the elected board?
Whoever their designee is, yes, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any others, discuss, any others?
What are the, are there any sunshine considerations in the change? I knew with the, to have a advisory committee conform to sunshine.
We don't have, we would not be under the sunshine law.
So, so that all the sunshine issues go away with this change?
That's not our concern.
I know, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
If they were here and they, and as a Stony Brook Advisory Committee and function, yes, then it's our concern.
They can have three members of their seven-member board get together and have any meetings they want without violating sunshine.
Well, we don't wanna opine on the HOA's responsibilities with regards to following the law. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tony?
That's correct. They are subject to the public records law, because they've been delegated a portion of the district's responsibilities. So they have to conform to that, and that's, if we need to beef up the agreement, we need to. But as to the issue about whether they're subject to sunshine law, and I've advised councils for HOAs in the past, that there's an AGO sitting out there that some may say is an outlier, but it's out there that says that to the extent that the entity is performing a delegated function of the local government, then that entity is also subject, not only just to the public records law, but to the sunshine law. That's sitting out there.
But it's not our problem.
But again, our concern.
It's their attorney. It's, it's a role of their attorney to advise them as to whether or not they need to comply.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so we have a first, we have a motion in a second, and all in favor?
Aye. All right, the next item is the draft facilities plan for the pond bank restoration priority list. This is part of the SRF requirements to get funding for design of the ponds on the priority list. This is a draft, and we wanted to get the draft in front of you to give, for any comments that you guys may have for the engineer. But it is our anticipation, we're anticipating bringing back the final, doing the full advertising. Tony's gonna do the advertising, everything, all the SRF requirements that we're supposed to do for adopting a facilities plan.
Before we go into that, I wanna backtrack just real quick. I wanna make sure that Doug's motion in my second was approving, because I don't think we said it specifically, and whoever's taking the minutes, that we're approving resolution twenty twenty-three thirteen. I know that we mentioned that.
Okay.
I wanna make sure that.
Directly, we'll still reflect.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Did I wrap it up in a nutshell? You wanna expand?
You did my job for me. Thank you.
So you're not billing us for it right now?
If you don't mind, I'll add a little to it. For the record, Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District, District Engineer. Just for a little bit of background, probably like four or five months ago, the board asked staff at Tetra Tech to review the ponds, compile a list ranking the lakes in a priority list based on their current condition. We did that, and based on that list, the board gave further direction for us to pursue FDP State Revolving Fund to fund the restoration of the eighteen worst lakes at the time of that priority list. So the first step to get SRF funding is to complete and adopt a facilities plan. And as Chelsea said, this is a draft facilities plan. We kinda wanna get this in front of you to make sure we're all on the same page. You guys agree with what we're proposing? And then there's no surprises when we have our advertised public hearing for public comment, and at that time, the board would adopt that facilities plan, and it would go to SRF for approval. So for the options that we reviewed, we reviewed GeoTextile Tube, GeoTube, and what we're currently doing right now, which is ArmorMax and the other option, which is non-woven GeoTextile in the lesser areas. For the purpose of calculating the estimated cost, we assumed, since we don't have any design done right now, we're just assuming that all of the lakes are gonna be done with the most expensive option for budgeting purposes. As we've done in all the other ones, we've always done a, a value engineering, and we've reduced the cost by, in other areas, doing lesser, you know, degrees of restoration. And we've also recommended that the GeoTube may be used in certain instances where it may be, you know, a good fit, which would be an additional cost savings.
And we've combined, as I recall, phase two and phase three, when we did this facility plan. We, we did two years of facilities plans, or two years of projects in one facility plan.
So this facilities plan covers four fiscal years.
Four fiscal years.
Covers eighteen lakes, which is about.
Typically, we're six lakes, so that'd be, okay, okay.
It's about six, six point seven miles of lake banks. Can you just, I'm looking at sixty-three. Is that have, is there dependencies to flow there?
What are you looking at, Doug?
Sixty-three over.
This one here?
Hit one.
Look at the big map.
What was?
Sixty-three is right. It's a really tiny one.
Yeah.
It's one of the bigger, it's gonna be easier to see.
Sixty-three is the, is that?
Since Stony Brook. Yeah, I think the map is actually. Yeah, and we're including.
North arrow always goes to.
Yeah, yeah. One of the comments from Keith was to get this rotated in portrait mode, so we'll get that, that done as well to make it a little easier.
I'm, but I'm looking too, and the arrow here is pointing, oh, sixty-three is that little diddly one that's coming out of Stony Brook?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That one, that blue line is coming across Gateway Boulevard and the FPL easement. That's the Flowway Four.
And that feeds into sixty-three?
No, sixty-three feeds, yeah, it's just interconnect. Sixty-three flows into that Flowway, then it comes across forty-two inch pipe underneath the road, and then comes into, what is that, one twenty-eight or something like that? Yeah, one twenty, one thirty, one thirty. The, the sixty-three, the dark blue is under the six-three. That's why you can't see it.
Wrong map, yeah. They should be, they're one of these lakes.
So we, so we've combined then three, four years of planned. Red, red colored and yellow colored needs into one facility plan.
We took the whole priority list and put it on one facilities plan. Let's one and done it. That way we get it.
Phase three.
This is gonna be.
Phase all.
Phase, it's all of them.
Well, yeah, we've done, we technically done phase one, A and B, is, I think that's what we. We were doing like phase two, year one, phase two, year. Right, so we done phase one, which was A and B. Yeah.
Yeah.
This'll be our second facility, or our third facilities plan, so.
But this covers the entire priority list.
Yes.
So then we adopt the, of the worst lakes. Of the red and.
Yellow.
My whole point of bringing up is like, that's just a very small pond, like, I wasn't sure of the severity, and if there was some dependencies into the Flowway, or it was more of a question or curiosity than anything else.
Well, that's one that I think when you get into the design, the level of effort you put into it probably will be minimal. It's got two yards that are on the back of it.
Do you wanna explain the process of this getting adopted and approved and adopted and the next steps?
Yeah, so once we all agree that, we'll put final comments in here. Stephen Bloom is working on the capital financing plan, and probably a good idea for them to see that before the public meeting.
Yeah, what is the estimated total? I know you said worst case.
We're at eight point.
Eight million?
We're at eight point six.
Eight point six million, okay. And that's worst-case scenario?
Yeah, that's all ArmorMax.
All ArmorMax.
Yeah.
That's design, construction, tech service, everything.
Yes.
That's the total number. That's what I got.
The highest number.
Eight point six.
Yeah.
And this is red and yellow, or just red?
Those are the eighteen lakes that were those in the priority list. Yeah, there's some.
So this, so we, so we all understand the process. So the board said, let's move forward on the, the ponds to get ahead, so we're, we're doing that design, right, Stephen?
Save time.
To save time. In the meantime, we're doing the full facilities plan per SRF requirements. This is the draft. We'll have a public hearing. We'll get it, the board hopefully will approve it. We'll submit that to DEP for their approval. Once they approve, then we can submit for design funds for that first phase of that priority plan that we had to get, we had. So then, again, we'll have essentially a four to five-year plan out for the next five years, so we can get ahead. We can go for, for design funding, engineering funding, and then once that gets approved, then we go for construction funding to SRF, and we'll just continue to do that for the next four to five years.
Save time.
Yes. And then that way, too, we have this adopted plan. The community knows what we're planning for the next five, five years or so.
I think that's a smart move, and they see it, because there's a lot of people out there still saying, did you forget about me? Well, this shows that we didn't forget.
What was the Stony Brook pond that, I'm sorry, what was the Stony Brook pond that we couldn't do last year because of the water levels?
Fifty-eight.
That's a big one.
The big one, and the, that borders Day Road eighty-two.
And that'll probably be, that one's for this, that one's scheduled for this year. Met Tower's under contract. And honestly, because of the water levels again this year, that one'll probably be later on. But Met Tower will evaluate as they finish the two ponds that they're on. They'll give us their plan for the next one that they're immobilized to.
To, to me, that pond has diddly spot of area feeding it upstream. Why wouldn't they be able to take and pump that one down so easy?
It's, it's a large body of water, yeah.
But it's a pond that has minimal drainage area.
I think they can. I mean, when they were pumping down several silver lakes, they were actually pumping down several lakes to the east, so combine that surface area.
A lot of ponds.
It is, and they pumped it down about a foot. So if, you know, knowing that, they, they can probably pump that one down. It may take, you know, a long time, but as the dry season progresses, it won't be it.
If, if you look at that little cross connection there, it would be very easy to take and pump fifty-eight or eight, fifty-eight or eighty-five, fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
It'd be easy to pump that thing across to that pond and get it out of there very fast.
Sure.
Minimal, minimal piping, minimal everything to do it except pumps.
Would be a plug problem.
So, but my question is for Bob. Bob, I noticed fifty-six and fifty-seven were in Pelican Preserve.
Yeah, that's an error on that, on that figure. I'm sorry about that. I just noticed it when I was looking at this, so fortunately, this is a draft. So those are actually supposed to be located in Gateway. My apologies on that.
But they do say GW, what I saw.
Yeah.
Everything in Pelican Preserve has PP.
Right.
So it's just.
Doesn't this have PP? I thought on the map it said PP.
Yeah, it's a mistake.
It does. It says fifty-seven PP.
Oh, and that's wrong.
Well, I was wondering if there was any overlap between.
No.
This'll just be focusing on the Gateway lakes.
Only the Flowway is the only commonality between Greater Gateway and Great Pelican.
The fifty-seven and fifty-eight are really Gateway. They're open in Stony Brook.
Say that again?
No, it's fifty-six and fifty-seven on the map.
I'm sorry, fifty-six and fifty-seven.
Yeah, those should be in, in Stony Brook.
They should be in Stony Brook, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, but the lake that we're talking about is neither fifty-six or fifty-seven, it's fifty-eight, which is also in Stony Brook, it's a lot, the big one.
Right, and that one's under contract right now.
So.
Okay.
Show, show on your screen with your finger or something where fifty-six and fifty-seven are in Stony Brook.
Yeah, see what we can.
I don't think you.
They're way over on the.
How do you get your finger?
Far left side.
Those two, okay.
And are those numbers correct? Numbers, fifty, correct, seven and eight for, for Gateway?
Fifty-six and fifty-seven, yeah.
Because I didn't think we had any duplicate numbers.
No, it was just an error.
Well, fifty-seven PP is on Prado Drive.
That is correct. Yeah, it's what he's saying. Those two are wrong.
Right, yeah, so.
They're dislocated.
Well, no, 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 no. Carol's correct.
No, Carol's right, because.
Fifty-six and fifty-seven are in Pelican Preserve.
Right.
The question is, what are the numbers? Should be, what should be the numbers?
Fifty-six and fifty-seven is Stony Brook.
Oh, we do have a duplication.
Yeah, we have duplication, yeah.
These two right here, sure. This one and this one.
Yeah. It's just a matter that those two shouldn't be in there. Yeah, they should be GG over on the other side of the road.
So needless to say, Tetra Tech, we'll get that fixed before next meeting.
Okay.
So the next step with this, so SRF only has four, they call it RFIs, which is a request for inclusions, and that's when they, they allow funding. We plan on bringing this back to you, the final draft in February with the public hearing, for hopefully your approval and adoption. That way we can meet the, what do we say, June?
So the, it would be the August meeting to get funding for the six lakes you guys already proved the design on. So we need to submit our documents in June, so this will, it takes them about two to three months to send this out to the clearing, state clearinghouse, and get this adopted and proved at their level. And we have plenty of time to do that.
So that's, we wanna get this adopted, get this, give them ample time. That way it's not rush, 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 and.
To approve the facility plan.
Right, once the facilities plan is adopted and, or adopted by y'all and approved by SRF, then we can go to those hearings and ask for design money, construction money.
But with going that consecutive route, they won't let us start the design until the facility plan is approved.
So you guys self-funded the first six lakes per design only.
That way.
You guys are going to go after construction funds for those lakes.
Okay, that's another one of those deals to accelerate.
Yes, we didn't wanna lose this year, yeah.
Okay.
Just a question of Stephen, I guess a couple of things, one, when this goes into the state, should we assign a number to it like draft, to two thousand twenty-three, or what number, just so we can differentiate that from prior?
We can do phase three is truly what it will be.
That's what.
Okay, and secondly, what, when do you want to have the hearing date and what's the notice timeframe, I can't recall, how many days in advance?
At least thirty days, I think, for the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
I would imagine it's thirty days.
Okay, so, the February hearing, the second one is what date?
February fifteenth, something like that, February first is Thursday.
Our second, the sixteenth.
Sixteen.
So we'd have to get advertising out in like five days?
Uh, yeah.
So, I don't know, we may have to push it to the first meeting in March, that's. Okay.
March second?
Would wait longer or otherwise you're gonna really pinch the time.
Okay.
Well, we will figure that out operationally, if there's any comments or anything given back from the board, and then we'll clearly have some homework to do on the GIS side of this, but our, our goal is to get it to you guys in February, um, we've all been well aware of our timelines, um, and so we wanna make sure that we, like I said, get SRF ample time.
And just for clarification, as far as the numbering of whatever facilities plan we're on, SRF doesn't care, they refer to everything by whatever the loan number is, that's all projects.
Which is even more fun to follow.
Yeah, especially when you have an A and a zero and a one and a two, and the zero, one, two came first, then an A, and then I have a three, and it's like, yeah, it's all over the place, so.
Do you have any comments or questions with regards to this draft facilities plan, other than the, the GIS issues?
Yeah, put, start your next one off with definitions.
Okay.
You've got more abbreviations you could shake a stick at in this regard.
Good point.
So do we have clarification certainty as to the hearing date? It's March second?
No, I, I would like.
We're gonna see if we can make the second meeting in February work, and if not, we have a fallback for March second.
Okay, so the second meeting February is February sixteenth.
Yes.
So, it's a thirty day notice.
Prepare the app.
Then, I know, and get it in, it needs to be then advertised no later than January fifteenth.
Right, so we'd have to have this finalized.
Which is next week.
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, you got that.
News press needs the revenue.
So do you need a motion for us to approve the draft of the storm war facility plan?
I don't think we need.
It's not necessary.
Motion to.
Set the hearing dates to February sixteenth and advertise.
For February sixteenth then, okay.
And advertise.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, good deal.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you Stephen, have a good night. All right, um, this next item, uh, I believe Mr. Geppert, some months ago, uh, in reviewing one of the financial statements, had made a comment about the money market account and how it wasn't doing the best.
Point zero something.
Exactly. Um, so, we've asked uh Stephen Bloom, which he is on the call, he'll uh give a presentation on this. Um, these are some investment options that the board has, the same, um, we, I asked him to do this for all of the funds, so I believe Pelican Preserve has done this in the past, but I don't know if the board has done this, so I'll turn it over Stephen to explain, um, and hopefully shed some light on the attachments.
Sure, um, thank you Chelsea, so, just to answer that last question, I actually was looking at a set of financials from two thousand and nineteen, and Pelican Preserve at that time, we had over fifteen CDs that we had laddered at that time, of just, you know, twelve months, eighteen months, and we had just been able to do it, you know, um, for a continuous period of time to do a really nice ladder, and so that every month, a couple CDs were maturing. And then, obviously, you know, with the interest rates going down so low, it just, you know, CDs, really any other form of investment was just not getting any kind of yield. So now that everything is, has rebounded, uh, we kinda went back and put together an analysis of each of the funds, um, as well as in that top cover, it's kind of a look of some of the, not only the top banks, but also come some of the top options uh for you to consider. And as you can see there, you know, your current um interest rate that you're getting from First Horizon, which is that third column, is three point one zero, which is just a far cry from when it was point one five, I've seen point one, I mean, it was just really bad. Uh, so that's, that's the good news, is, is right off the bat, the money market has rebounded, uh, to the point where it's now gonna be getting over three percent. But in addition to that, uh, we can start going back and ladder in some CDs again, and even some T-bills, some treasury bills, as you can see there, even those rates are, are doing so much better. Um, and we can really, you know, just get as much uh interest as possible by also maintaining a very high degree of security, which is always, risk is always the number one issue for um any governmental entity in terms of investing, is making sure that you're preserving uh your investments and being very low risk. So that's what you have in front of you, very low risk type of options from different banks, so you can see kind of what's available to you. After you get from the options, as Chelsea mentioned, uh, we did an analysis on each of the funds, and very conservative, all of this stuff is very conservative when you're looking at that analysis, we certainly are not trying to push any boundaries. Uh, there are, you know, not only projects on the books, but there are upcoming projects, so everything we do, um, we wanna make sure that we again maintain um the principle, um, as well as make sure you have sufficient liquidity uh to handle your investments, as well as keeping in mind that even some of your um projects, like the, the Lake Bank projects, the district has to put the money upfront, so you know, and even before you get some of the money back and, um, from the loans, you still have to have that cash available. So nothing we did here was extreme, or, or just, we just really wanted to kinda bring this to the board, um, and then we'll also have this discussion with um BPAC again, and just kinda start this and, and see what the interest level was, was, you know, getting some CDs, um, some T-bills, and so really laddering it, I mean, the, the key to doing this well is to make sure that you don't have four million dollars tied up in a three-year CD, and then all of a sudden, hey, I need this for, you know, like the project we discussed earlier. You wanna set this up and, and ladder it so that every month, you've got a significant additional amount of money on top of your reserves and top of what's in your money mark, to say, okay, you know, what do we do? We, we've got, you know, half a billion dollars maturing. Do we reinvest? Do we reinvest part of it? Do we have a, a special need, a new project that we have to hold this back? So this is kind of the start of this process, it's, it's, you know, once you start investing in CDs, you're kinda going above and beyond money markets. Really is, has to be maintained and, and managed um on a monthly basis to make sure that you're maintaining your liquidity.
Yeah, I mean, my, my personal opinion is I, I definitely like the approach here, I, I would prefer doing, you know, staying in with six month here, Stephen, I know we're not investing too much in, in a twelve month purchase, but I almost feel like with, with the returns, we can maybe focus more on that three months and six months, as opposed to the twelve months.
It's a great point.
Yep, I do.
The market is, is, as you can see, when you look through the um option page, the market is very uncertain what twelve months looks like. That's what happens when, you know, you normally, in a traditional, in the past, you know, twelve months would always be higher than six months. The only time that doesn't occur is when there's so much uncertainty that you just don't know where it would go. So I, I wouldn't certainly put a ton in twelve months, the only, the other side of that would be if, if all of a sudden, you know, three months from now, the, the rates go in the opposite direction, um, if there's a, a kinda, a counter adjustment to the, to the Fed fund that goes down, that would be the only reason to maybe do twelve months to make sure that you're.
So you're, so you're hedging, you know, the two fifty, well, you're that rate, so in the event that your six month.
Still make a change.
Your six month, um, at the end of your six month, there's a depreciation or the interest rates lower, you're still.
Right, if, in other words, if there's a market counter correction in the next couple months, uh, which, you know, no one knows, and there's been some, some suggestion that the, the Fed rate will, will drop it a little bit, don't know. So like you said, perfect word is hedge, so in other words, you're saying, okay, I'm, I'm gonna give up, you know, a little bit on the twelve months, but if, if the rates start to drop, and now all of a sudden you're at four percent, now your twelve month looks much more attractive at four point six, and I'm just quoting the Valley National rates, just to kinda throw that out there, but either way, you know, you're certainly in, in good hands, with a good solid rate at the six months, so there is nothing that absolutely forces you um into a twelve month, other than, you know, kinda, you know, looking at it now. Doug, to your point, we could do three and six, and once the three months mature, then do another three and six, and you start building your way to twelve months.
Do, do we need a motion to uh adopt this plan?
This isn't necessarily a plan per se, it's just wanted to get it in front of you, and if this is something that the board would like to entertain, I would suggest directing Stephen Bloom to work on implementing it, and perhaps coming back with a formal, you know, plan of action.
And he feels safest with first.
Pelican's been doing it for about six years. Just this way.
Where Steve's looking with the recommendation of going with First Horizon, is that?
Well, that's just who we're with, yeah.
That's, that's who we bank with right now, um, I, I don't, I.
Well, looks.
They certainly look competitive.
They look very competitive here.
They haven't been the most responsive, let's just put that one.
Well, is, hey, Stephen, is, is your investment plan uh that model, because you've got a four point three and a four point seven, four point six five, that looks like it aligns with Valley National, or am I wrong?
It, yeah, I aligned it with the best rate um per product, but I, again, that's a discussion point about the appetite to move money out of your current bank, you know, you can see there that you're not, you know, losing much if the, the strategy is, let's just, we don't wanna be, you know, even if it's a small, small risk, we don't wanna move money out. As long as First Horizon is um competitive, then we could keep it there, it's, it's obviously a quicker transaction, um theoretically less paperwork, um, they have T-bills, they have everything that we would want to do. But I, I, I know that, you know, the long term of it, if they're not competitive, you know, and again, a, as Chelsea mentioned, you know, sometimes they're not the most responsive as well, you know, we really had to kinda keep pushing and pushing, not only to get some rates, but to, to get their, their money market a little bit more competitive. To have the option on the table is important, if, if we do need to kinda say, well, maybe Valley National, especially if that, the differential between banks grows, um, you know, reaches, you know, a point, you know, if you're saying that First Horizon is at four point four one, and all of a sudden, you know, Valley National starts to get to five point four one, we certainly wanna have that option to be able to, to uh get that additional interest.
So what are we gonna do?
So just give direction to, so the board would like to use reps to Chelsea or to Stephen to go out and bring a formal.
Plan back, proposal back.
Stephen, is that good with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, so again, we wanted to bring this in front of you, again, Mr. Geppert's comment, and the same presentation will be given to Pelican next week at their meeting, um, to hopefully get us in an even better uh financial position, so. Um, it, I, I think Stephen mentioned that the district did this in the past, Mr. Geppert mentioned that Pelican's been doing this for quite some time, so we wanted to get this back in front of you, we'll work with Stephen and hopefully come back with a plan in the next month or so.
Yep, sounds great.
Okay. Okay, so then uh district manager, so.
I don't have any items um as of right now, happy new year.
All right. All right, Tony, district attorney.
Wait until the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Oh, this is a refresher.
It's in.
Thank you.
Uh, just before you dive into this, uh, the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee will be getting the same presentation, as well as the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee um will be getting the same presentation, since we have new members um here.
I think Ms. Packhouse saw this pretty much recently about Pelican Preserve, so. Want me to start then, is that okay?
Yes.
This is slightly modified, uh, this is updated as of December twenty-eighth, see if I can use this properly. And again, Sunshine Law Matters, we've always advised, attorney should be the first person you direct questions to about participation in the activity, if you have any doubts or questions about whether or not uh be, be subject to the Sunshine Law. Others will give you guidance and advice, but it may not be the appropriate legal advice, it'll be their advice. An important feature of the Sunshine Law and, is that we, again, the business of the governmental bodies, for most of them in Florida, are formed in public, notice, public meetings, that'll be the theme we hear throughout this. Not to have private meetings unless there are specific exemptions outlined in the statutes or the constitution. Uh, overview, Florida's government and the Sunshine Law, the Sunshine Law, it provides both the constitutional, the people in the state of Florida voted to put it in their constitution, and statutory right of notice of and access to governmental proceedings of public boards or commissions at both the state and local levels. That's the general. And here's the section of the Florida Constitution, Article One, Section twenty-four B. The important part is, all meetings and of any collegial body of a special district, which the, uh, CDDs are special districts, at which official acts are to be taken, or at which public business of such body is to be transacted or discussed, shall be open and noticed to the public, except with respect to meetings exempted pursuant to the section, or specifically closed by the constitution. That's the constitutional framework and basis. The legislature implemented that, in part with the adoption of Section two eighty-six point zero one one for our statutes. All meetings of any board of any political subdivision, and the district qualifies as a political subdivision for purposes of the Sunshine Law, except as otherwise provided in the constitution, are declared public meetings, open to the public at all times. In no resolution rule or formal actions here we consider binding, except as taken or made at such meeting, the board must provide reasonable notice of such meetings. All such meetings. And then the statute goes on to say, the minutes of a meeting of any such board shall be promptly recorded. It doesn't articulate the nature of the minutes, they can be, some agencies do verbatim, county commissions sometimes have a court reporter, some have real summary minutes where it just says, motion to approve budget ma- made by so-and-so, seconded by so-and-so, approved, and it goes on, which really doesn't tell you a whole bunch, but there's, there's a whole range of what minutes can consist of. Uh, the three basic general requirements, all meetings of public boards or commissions must be open to the public, includes meetings of special districts such as community development districts. Reasonable notice of such meetings must be given, and minutes of the meetings must be taken and promptly recorded, again, as I mentioned, these are general requirements, there are specific requirements that come into play uh as to CDDs. The scope is if two or more members from the same, and that's the key, same board or commission convened to discuss some matter which will foreseeably come before that board or commission for action, then the Sunshine Law applies. We always advise our clients conservatively on the Sunshine Law, we'll explain why later, that the section that talks about matter which will foreseeably come before that board or commission for action. Our opinion is, whatever happens today could come back tomorrow, could come back three years from now, could come back two years from now. So that any matter involving the district or governmental body cannot talk about it, or have a meeting with any other board or committee member absent at a noticed public meeting unless there's an exemption. And we see this all the time, we're getting recurring items or issues, and that way we take a conservative approach. Types of boards, subject to it, as I mentioned before and cited to the statute, any board or commission of any state agency or authority, or of any agency or authority of any county, municipal corporations, which are cities, or villages, or towns, or political subdivision. Sunshine Law applies to elected and appointed boards, including special districts and community development districts, including, and we've had this discussion, advisory boards and committees. The Community Development District examples, the boards elected or appointed to fill the vacancy, the committees are appointed by the board. Advisory board committees are examples, city tourism board, or in this case, Parks or Community Advisory Committee, or the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. What's generally outside the scope of the Sunshine Law, which does not require a notice public meetings, are board-created fact-finding committees or groups, and the group has to be solely fact-finding, cannot be advisory in any form or fashion. Staff committees were not delegated decision-making authority, as opposed to fact-finding or information gathering. Generally, private organizations, we've had that, mentioned that outlier, I'll call it, Attorney General's opinion, unless created by the public entity or delegated the public entity's governmental function, or an integral part of a public entity's decision. or an integral part of the public entity's decision-making process could result in that private organization being subject to the Sunshine Law. But that's that private organization's council's guidance that would be involved. Generally, outside the scope also are the state judiciary and the state legislature.
The ones who. The ones who pass.
That's my favorite one. That's my favorite.
Don't do as I do.
We have the Constitution, they adopt the legislation to implement the Constitution, and here we go. Uh, so then uh within the scope, as I mentioned before, members elect, we've had that when Carol got elected, and incumbent candidates, outside the scope, non-incumbent candidates. So if you're running for office, you could, you're not a member and not a member-elect. Uh, with regards to the scope, interaction, members of different boards or committees, the Sunshine Law generally does not apply if the interaction is between officials of members of different entities or different committees of an entity. For example, we constantly have references to the commissioner that represents this area and lives here, Commissioner Pendigras, he's on a different board or committee, a different board, so you can talk with him. The difference is unless one of the officials has been delegated power to act on behalf of his or her entity or committee and bind it. So, excuse me, that's one of the exemptions where it does qualify, have to meet the Sunshine Law requirements. Meeting the staff, the Sunshine Law does not apply to meetings with staff unless the staff is being used as a liaison between board or committee members. Uh, and get into that about what constitutes a meeting, we had that little conversation later about conduits, daisy chaining and items such as that. So what types of meetings are covered? Meetings of other boards or committees when you are a visitor, generally no. Unless there are two or more officials of the same board or committee and there is interaction. That's the difference. You can be sitting in the audience watching what's going on with another board member. But if there's any interaction on a topic and involves the district business, then it must be noticed and accessible to the public. Meetings of other boards, committees, when you are a member. No, unless there are two or more officials of the same board or committee and there is interaction. Again, that gets back into uh whole idea, you can't have interaction. Community forums, and you have this, no, unless there are two or more officials of the same board or committee and there is interaction. Social interaction, no, again, unless there's interaction or discussing issues. And Ron, one of the examples I give of what not to do is uh in a city in North Florida, four council members out of five decided to convene at a local bar. And they're all sitting in the same booth. And one of the local residents didn't really appreciate that, so he took a picture and he, the board, the council member said, we weren't discussing anything involving the the city or the council. The resident said, well, I heard you talking about Councilmember Smith, I'll use the name, and about his votes and actions taken by the council. So that's where they can, you know, the perception can of a violation can lead to somebody finally complain with the state attorney's office. So careful about that kind of social interaction. Uh, there's always a guidance is uh being careful about that. What types of activities are prohibited meetings? Emails, text messages and other written communications to, from and among board members. And we've talked about that extensively. Social media posts with responses or interaction cannot be done. They constitute a meeting. If one board member posts something on Facebook, another board member responds and it involves district matters, then that constitutes a meeting under the Sunshine Law. Fact-finding fixed by the governing board, that can't be done. Committees can do fact-finding, the board cannot do fact-finding. Private discussions concerning district matters during recess cannot take place. Inaudible discussions between board committee members that public cannot hear, that cannot take place. And I mentioned later on, see Sebastian City Council article below, and that was part of the issue with the Sebastian City Council, among many other matters, uh, that there were these inaudible discussions sort of off the record during the meeting. And that's also the city council know that locked the city hall doors, conducted a session, fired the city manager, fired the city attorney, and then they wondered why they were being prosecuted for Sunshine Law violations, and they committed perjury during the investigation. So they also were prosecuted for perjury. So that's Sebastian City Council. What other meetings are covered and must be open? Absent specific exemptions, we, the board, I believe, knows this. Workshops, yes. Again, exemptions are nearly construed. Investigative meetings, generally yes. And there are some exemptions in the statutes. Attorney board meetings, they are covered, must be open, generally yes, but exceptions for closed-door attorney board meetings, sometimes called shade meetings. Examples of some other exemptions from public meetings, that portion of a meeting that would reveal a security or fire safety system plan or portion thereof. A lot of this is a product of 9/11. So that if you're discussing a security system like we've had conversations before, cameras around this complex, we can close that meeting to the public. Now, it needs to be recorded, need to have minutes, but they're exempt from public disclosure. Another one is any portion or meeting in which a negotiation with a vendor is conducted pursuant to competitive solicitation, at which a vendor makes an oral presentation as part of a competitive solicitation, or which a vendor answers questions. Again, that's exempt from the public, you still have to maintain minutes of of that particular meeting. Closed-door meetings with attorneys, it's limited to pending litigation, not potential litigation. It's settlement discussions and strategy session related to litigation, and exemption is narrowly construed. Uh, who must call the meeting? The entity's attorney shall advise the entity to a public meeting if he or she desires advice concerning pending litigation. Reasonable public notice of the time and date of the session and the names of the persons who will be attending the session. The entire session is recorded by a court reporter. Court reporter's notes are transcribed and filed with the entity's clerk within a reasonable time. And the transcript shall be made part of the public record upon conclusion of the litigation. Up until that time, is exempt from public record disclosure. Up until that legislation, governmental bodies such as districts, cities, counties could not meet in closed-door sessions with their attorney, discuss litigation. If you're a private corporation, you can meet all day long with your attorney and it's confidential. But up up until that legislation, that was uh impossible. But it's narrowly construed by the courts. So you have, who can attend? The public board, the entity's attorneys, the chief administrative, chief executive officer, the court reporter, no one else. So it, and it, so that makes it awkward, and if you need additional information. But that's how the statute reads and the courts construe it. And with regards to that also, uh, on the closed-door session, we've had this, once a closed-door session starts, you cannot leave and go back in. Uh, that because because by leaving, coming back in becomes open. So that, again, notice of procedure, notice on agenda. Sunshine Law requires reasonable notice. So for committees, at a minimum, we recommend posting on districts' websites. You can do email blasts, post on district properties. As to CDDs and other independent districts, there is a specific notice required. The agenda uh must be posted at least seven days in advance on the district website. And that applies for each meeting or workshop. And that agenda has to be on the district website for at least one year after posting. The legislature at one point in time a few years ago said, not only the agenda, but all the materials that would be part of the agenda had to be posted on the website a week ahead of time. I think enough cities, towns, counties and everybody else got so annoyed with that 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 requirement got dropped, it's just the agenda now, that needs to be posted. Uh, notice of procedure, location, what's important is facilities that discriminate or reasonably strict access are prohibited because it's really not a public meeting. If you anticipate a large crowd and you've had this happen before, you need to accommodate in a larger venue or provide other ways for the public to participate. Uh, in the case of a CDD, you have an additional requirement. The meeting show of the board shall be held in a public meeting when available within the district, in a county courthouse of a county in which the district is located or in a building in the county accessible to the public. We've had these meetings where they've been in a gated community, but everybody gets let in. That's how we have the public meeting. What if you can't attend the meeting? We had this, there's an Attorney General's opinion. It's it's a moldy oldie, but we still go with it, that if a person uh has the inability to attend due to extraordinary circumstances, then the rest of the board, once a physical form is established, can allow full participation. Now, has the have the courts, the Attorney General's office explained the parameters of what constitutes extraordinary circumstances? No, they leave it to the discretion of the governmental body. Uh, minutes, promptly recorded, it can be the verbatim account or summary of the discussion, must be available for public inspection. What happens if you fail to comply with the Sunshine Law? There's criminal penalties. If it's intentional, removal from office, non-criminal infractions. Uh, attorney's fees can be charged, and the local government cannot pay your attorney's fees in that instance. There can be civil actions for injunctive or declaratory relief, and actions taken may be set aside as being void from the beginning, ab initio. There are curative actions that can take place, they may be available at times, but uh when the curative action means you bring it back to the board for a full, robust discussion, review all the issues and then decide. Uh, otherwise, the courts don't like you just rubber stamping. So again, show you to comply, actions, contracts may be void, must independently take final action at a publicly noticed meeting, it cannot rubber stamp. The kind of coverage no one wants from a local government perspective is what happened back in October 2020. The Cape Coral mayor settled some public meetings, uh, Sunshine Law matters. Uh, he was charged with uh just civil infractions in that instance. Yeah, but former news press likes to put photographs of public officials standing in front of a judge on the front page of a newspaper. And Wink and NBC, all of them like to do that. We prefer that not happen unless you get an award or a large check for the district. Uh, some examples, and if you want to, we can send you the PowerPoint so you can click on these. Again, uh, Mayor Cape Coral pays $100 fine to settle Sunshine Law, but he had to pay attorney's fees and then also having to be up here before the judge. The Jacksonville City Council members at a bar, it sparks discussion over Sunshine Law. Uh, the issue with regards to Sebastian City Council members arrested. Leon County School Meeting, they actually, they went and did a site visit, which they shouldn't have. Uh, and then uh there there's a number of them that, again, the local mayor plantation violated open government campaign finance law. So you have a number of those issues we'd rather not have that happen in this district. And lastly, uh, you know, just this little cartoon, why don't you cast a shadow? Because I'm one of the good guys, I'm transparent. And that way, uh, it's Sunshine Law. If you have any questions, um, you're an answer, or just give me a holler.
Thank you.
And again, we've, our advice is always very conservative on the Sunshine Law. Thank you. Uh, two, a couple of other matters, if I may, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, with regards to, uh, we had, as we noticed, we had an add-on on the agenda. What what we're requesting are, there's a couple of items and a couple of cases to discuss. Uh, bear with me just a moment. Oh, thank you very much. Just need to find it here. Uh, as counsel for the district, we're requesting authorization to send a demand for judgment and proposal for settlement in the Four Line litigation in the amount of $440,000 to Four Line to resolve all claims against Four Line in the pending litigation with a mutual release and dismissal of the lawsuit upon receipt of clear funds. We ask for a motion and approval of that actually.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, uh, we have the pending litigation of Michael Whitfield versus the district in the U.S. District Court, Middle District of Florida. Case number two, colon, 22 dash C V, like a Victor, dash 00719 dash J E S dash N, like a Nancy P, like a Paul, M like a Mike. And we would request a closed-door session uh at 4:00 PM on January 19th, 2023. As we had, uh, and John Patanovic, who's retained counsel in this matter, desire advice concerning the pending litigation. And the meeting will be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. And again, we're requesting that for 4:00 PM on January 19th. We estimate half an hour.
Yes.
Uh. Why'd you pick that time?
I know.
In the middle of our.
Uh, if you want it later.
4:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Yes.
How about early?
That was when Jen was available.
He's not.
The other retained counsel is not available until after, until four.
I like the 2 o'clock prior to, yeah.
He's in litigation.
He's in deposition starting at 1 o'clock for at least a couple of hours, so that unfortunately will not work.
So we're going to break our meeting at 3? Throw everybody out, pull the closed door and bring everybody back?
No, he won't be available. Mr. Patanovic is not available until four.
But yes, this, yes, so we'll have, we start a regular meeting in a 4 o'clock. We'll.
Five to four.
We'll recess and then we have.
Let's push it to four, can you do 4:30?
Oh, yes, anytime after.
So let's do 4:30 and let's just have the meeting, we'll do an hour and a half meeting, and then at 4:30.
That'll be a record for us, okay?
It's 4:25.
And once again, once, once again.
We have new leadership, Bob.
If the board approves, the way we'll do it is we'll advertise it at 4:30 or soon thereafter as can be heard. So if the board is in the middle of the topic or about ready to wrap all all of the matters and this is the last item, we can push it later in the agenda. So we would ask the board's authorization to conduct that closed-door session and authorize advertising.
You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you. And let me see.
You'll get that legal ad out?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Along with the other one.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, let's see here, Whitfield. And uh, nothing more, I don't believe.
Okay, any questions for Tony? I looked at Bob.
The memorandum on the boardwalk, that's not for us.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, this was information, I handed out a memorandum uh with regards to use of recumbent tricycles on Pelican Reserve Boardwalk. This is an issue that arose in the first part of December. Uh, there are multiple questions or items and issues involving the boardwalk in Pelican Reserve. And the the district staff along with PPEC will be discussing a number of them at the PPEC meeting next week on the 12th. But I, uh, this issue was, I'll call a sort of one item, and we.
Narrowly defined.
Yes, we want to address it this time so that there wouldn't be any issue on the part of the resident and or as to the ability to utilize recumbent trice under the circumstances that have been outlined to the district.
With that, and then the changeover of management at Pelican, they they weren't familiar with this. So I, we sent this request over to Tony to opine. This is the result of that inquiry. Um, and so we wanted to be able to pass that information back to KW.
This is very narrow in its scope.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Because they're a lot more broader.
That's correct. It was narrowed by design. Okay, specifically to this, because we have a whole other discussion, we, it was back in the April 4th memorandum that talked about other power assisted and a number of other items, so it's it's much longer.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for reminding me, Chelsea.
Yes.
All right, so without other questions and future board meetings and agenda management?
Oh, I, before we leave that, with Tony. Uh, the project for easements and all, we have an expected termination date. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, my expected termination date is end of next week. That's what I hope to have in that report.
All right, very good. Thank you. And that concludes the O and M for irrigation too.
To the extent I can answer the irrigation questions, yes, because, yeah, that that's what I'm, that's what I'm shooting for. The primary issue is the landscape easements and the easement landscaping. As an adjunct to that, I've been looking at the documents associated with the landscaping to see if there's anything nearby, they call it sprinkler systems typically. And so that'll be noted in my report to the extent I can find anything.
Okay, thank you.
Flavia, I just had um two things that I failed to mention under district manager items. If you could let me just mention them real quick. Um, I just want to do a reminder to the public that we are hosting as long as the sheriff doesn't cancel on us. Um, the residential security presentation in this boardroom on January 18th at 10:00 AM. Um, it's again, just a community free community event that the sheriff, um, we've asked for them to come in and they'll give that presentation. Um, we did have.
That'll also be open to Pelican residents?
It's open to the public in general.
Okay, so we want to make sure we.
We're just, we're just the hosting body.
But I would, we'll make sure we get notification. Randy's here on behalf of PPEC. Bill's here, so maybe we could put this out in.
Did Randy, I think, I think our Randy sent something out last week and I was going to ask if he sent out something closer.
Yep, we will. We'll, we'll send it as it gets closer. Um, we were notified that if we do need to rent Denny Grimes in the future, that there is a cost associated to renting. Um, and, nope, not for anymore. And then um we did get notice through the grapevine that um the county had to close some of their um soccer fields, um specifically Bay Shore, which was accommodating other leagues. Um, and so we have quickly worked with that um Florida West League organizer to accommodate them here at our soccer fields. We do have some wear and tear in our fields right now, specifically Field Two. We were trying to give it rest, but we're also trying to accommodate and and uh these other leagues that were kind of put into a bind because of issues with lighting, meeting lighting requirements. So um we're we're being good neighbors.
Okay, I have a question with that. So would that be Tim that we're working on scheduling or would that be Georgia?
Georgia's still doing that right now.
But is it the goal at one point to move that task to Tim? Because that's what he is.
The goal is to move it to Facilitron.
But meanwhile, I did have that question regarding Georgia doing versus Tim doing. He is Parks and Rec, so I thought, and he's scheduling with.
It's the intent to.
Should go to him.
Agreed. Um, we're hoping to get the board approval of Facilitron. Um, that way it would help. Right now it is very paperwork oriented, it is, it's. now it is very paperwork oriented, it is, it's coordinating cancellations, rain days, events, charges, creating an invoice, scheduling, making sure the calendar's up to date.
I get, I get all that, sorry. It was up on your, the ball's on your court to bring us the cost. So the sooner you get us that information, and the sooner we'll make our decision, I guess.
Yep, it's coming back the 19th, but yes, it is, it is our intent to transition that to Tim, once he gets a full staff.
A full staff?
Mm-hmm. He, we are not fully staffed.
I have one employee that we're potentially hiring to fill this maintenance position.
Yes.
Okay.
I just found out yesterday, so we're in the process.
All right. Thank you for letting me jump.
All right, so with nothing else on the agenda management, no other questions? Do you have anything? Do you have any question on agenda management?
Again, if, oh.
I just had a question. With not being familiar with the way you generally do things, we've, we just had Mr. Hall resign effective the end of January. So how do, how does the district go about filling that position?
That responsibility falls within district management. So Laura and I have already put together the posting, we've advertised, we actually have a couple interviews scheduled for next week already. The filling of that role falls within essentially my cap. And so we have a team that'll be doing interviews, and this is a pretty big role within the district, and so I don't want to rush it. We, we do have some fail safes with regards to making sure we're meeting all of our regulatory requirements with FDEP and DOH. So essentially, that ball is in, in our court.
Okay, so you don't hire an outside firm or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
You do it internal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then what, would your, if, if everything went well, what would, what would you anticipate being the date when you would bring a recommendation to the board?
That doesn't come to the board.
No.
That decision, the hiring and firing of staff falls within the district manager's responsibility.
Oh, okay.
The board is responsible for my position alone.
Okay.
And Tony's, essentially.
So she would come back with a, for awareness, hey, we have hired so-and-so.
Yep. They start on this date, we, like we did with Keith, well, you weren't here, but with Keith, we, we hired Keith, and then he came into a board meeting and just did a small intro and welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Kyle, we did use it outside firm when we were searching for Chelsea, and outside recruitment firm. So it's within the realm of how we do it, just a certain job.
I'm very confident, we did pay for some advertising with a lot of the American Water Works Association, American Public Works Association, Government Jobs, ICMA. So this is, again, it's some large shoes to fill, but I, I'm confident that we'll be able to fill it. Again, I don't want to rush it because we're so small, and the impact of that position on the staff is very important to me and Laura. And so we want to make sure it's the right fit. That's why we have fail safes in place with regards to making sure we're compliant with FDEP and DOH. So, and Kenny, Kenny will be involved in all of the interviews that we can during the time that he's here, and I'll be spending a lot of time on the enterprise fund this next month.
That's a lie.
Since we are actually on that topic, so open, we have utility, and then we have also, anybody has interviewed for the position with Jim, because he's leaving off in the February?
We have the utilities director position, we have a utility make field operator position, we have the landscape maintenance position, which is Jim's replacement, and then we have a maintenance worker position, that's in the Parks and Rec Department.
The maintenance worker position is hopefully.
Sorry, the maintenance position worker is hopefully going to be filled. We have a candidate, we're running those standard background checks on him right now, and as soon as those results come back. Tim has identified a candidate, we're just waiting to make sure he's okay.
But that's a position that we created, that was a position that we had.
No, that was in the budget for this year, it's been vacant.
Correct, but we've never had an actual person doing that particular duty. I'm more concerned of the ones that are leaving, Jim and Kenny, I guess Kenny would be the priority. Do we, so that's my question. Anybody that we have interview for Jim's position, anybody show interest? Because I did see the description, and I was kind of concerned because it's a lot of stuff in there. It's mingle, it's not just landscaping.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's maintenance, it's a lot of stuff.
Yes, it is. We tweaked for that position, we're tweaking it, we have had applicants come through. We want this to be a landscape maintenance-focused position, but we also want it to wear a second hat, like everybody else in this district does. And so that's why you see some of the other public works projects included as part of that, that description. So we do, again, with that position, we have a backup plan in the event that we need an interim position or to fill that role as an interim. Right now, it's a competitive market, and finding somebody with those types of, that landscaping background, it's, it's tough. So.
Has the board seen the job description for that position?
It's extensive.
It, I haven't found one, because I was looking it up, I haven't found one that's similar to ours. And given that we're so small, we're asking a heck of a lot.
Mm-hmm. That we are.
So what I would probably recommend there is, I don't have a problem with you trying to find everything that you want. You may want to tweak it, and, and also additional post, and just see, I almost do an AP testing, see if you can get, you can get to everything you want by simplifying the job description a little bit. Because you're right, it's very competitive, and you may not be able to find one person for that, for that role. But I wouldn't, I don't know if I would wait to find that out. I would post, like, if it's a landscaping maintenance job, then post a landscaping maintenance job as, just as a side.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's, we've had some internal discussions with the future of that position, and then potentially expanding it with regards to oversight.